Here, Council President Pro Tem Heisler.
Here.
Counselor Fries McSperren.
Here.
Counselor McCrino.
Here.
Counselor Maynard.
Here.
Counselor Nolan.
Here.
Counselor Spikachi.
Here.
All are present. Thank you. Will you all please rise and join Counselor Nolan in the prayer and the pledge?
Dear Lord, we come before you to ask you for guidance, sense, and responsibility to do what's right for our community. We have fallen down that you allow us to be good towards one another, respectful towards one another, honor one another, and do things like you would like us to do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have with us today the Mayor of the City of New London, Daryl Justin Finizio, and we have a special proclamation by the Mayor and the Council to recognize our partners and our years of effort with our neighborhood stabilization programs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask you to come and please join me in the side of the unity and harmony between the Council and the administration on all fronts of our city. There are many issues in the City of New London with which all of us who are New Londoners may disagree unpassionately, but we can come together as a community to support those organizations that have worked so hard outside of government to make our city a better place. And these organizations, we recognize tonight, have literally transformed neighborhoods for the better, expanding owner-occupied housing in our city, beautifying neighborhoods that have fallen into disrepair. Without their help, this would not have been possible, so it's great for us tonight to give them special recognition. There are four organizations, and I would like to ask them individually. The first is Neighbor Works New Horizons. And I'll read it as you come forward. Whereas Neighbor Works New Horizons, in existence for over twenty years, has substantially contributed to the City of New London by increasing the tax base through multiple extensive renovations of blighted homes in New London, creating affordable housing for low- to moderate-income homeowners restricted to remain affordable and owner-occupied, providing affordable rental units by restricting all rehabilitated two-family homes and offering homebuyer education classes, budget and credit repair classes, and foreclosure counseling. Now therefore, I, Daryl Justin Finizio, Mayor of the City of New London, commend Julie Saven, Director of Real Estate Development Southeast Region, and thank everyone at Neighbor Works New Horizons for all their hard work in New London and throughout Connecticut. Congratulate. Thank you so much. The next organization is Hope Inc. Representatives of Hope would please come forward. And I've been very pleased to attend some of your home openings. They've been wonderful to be at. Whereas Hope Inc., in existence since May 1989, has substantially contributed to the City of New London by increasing the tax base through dozens of extensive renovations of blighted homes throughout New London, created affordable housing for low- to moderate-income homeowners restricted to remain affordable and owner-occupied, rehabilitating to date twelve homes on Beldon Street, one of the most blighted and economically depressed streets in the city where the poverty rate is thirty-three percent. And I will break script only to say the before-and-after photos of Beldon Street are amazing, simply amazing. Creating a rent-to-home program where affordable rentals are made available to low-income families, setting up savings and guidance towards homeownership, providing affordable rental units by restricting all rehabilitated two-family homes and rehabilitating homes for hope-owned rentals to low and extremely low-income families, offering a home repair workshop every spring where new homeowners are given free instruction by experts in the field on how to make basic plumbing, carpeting, and electrical repairs. Now therefore, I, Daryl Justin Finizio, Mayor of the City of New London, Connecticut, commend Marilyn Graham, Executive Director of Hope Inc., and also thank Hope's entire Board of Directors for their work in New London and throughout Connecticut. Congratulations. The next organization, a great organization in our city, is Habitat for Humanity of Southeastern Connecticut. Is there a representative of Habitat here?
Yes.
Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Southeastern Connecticut, in existence since 1987, has substantially contributed to the City of New London by increasing the tax base through twelve extensive renovations of blighted homes in New London, with two more in the planning stages. Building eleven new two-family homes on blighted unused property in the City of New London, with another in the planning stage now. Created affordable housing for low to very low-income homeowners restricted to remain affordable and owner-occupied, engaging over five thousand volunteers who donated one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand hours to building and renovating homes in New London. Now therefore, I, Daryl Justin Finizio, Mayor of the City of New London, commend Terry O'Rourke, Executive Director of Habitat, and thank everyone at Habitat for all their hard work in New London and throughout Connecticut. And last, but certainly not least, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Inc. Is there a representative as well? Whereas Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Inc., in existence since 1989, has contributed to the City of New London by increasing the tax base through nineteen extensive renovations of blighted homes in New London, building four new two-family homes on blighted unused property in New London, creating affordable housing for low- to moderate-income homeowners restricted to remain affordable and owner-occupied, providing affordable rental units by restricting all rehabilitated two-family homes and administering the state-funded New London County Downpayment Loan Program and previously the American Dream Downpayment Initiative, which have provided forgivable loans for down payment and closing costs to twenty-eight low- to moderate-income first-time homebuyers in New London. Now therefore, I, Daryl Justin Finizio, Mayor of the City of New London, commend Peter Batt as President of Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Inc., and thank everyone at Echo for their work in New London and throughout Connecticut. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. I'll give you the President. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Finizio. Three point oh, public hearings, there were none. Four point oh, minutes of the previous meeting. We have the minutes of the July first meeting. Members, what's your pleasure?
I accept.
Is there a second? Second by Counsel Maynard. Corrections, Counsel Spikachi.
Thank you. Yes, I have a couple of edits for your consideration on page one. Also present was Counsel McCrino at this meeting. Is that looking out for you?
Thank you.
Just want to make sure you get your. On page six. If we can just identify the first camp of seven point two, right? And on page seven. In the last section of paragraph seven point one N, insert the word unanimously after votes to record how the vote went. And I'd like to strike in paragraph seven point one O, the sentence President Pasrow accepts as an amendment. And in that same paragraph, at the end, insert the word unanimously after Counsel approves. On page nine. Second to last paragraph. About the middle of the paragraph, if we can just identify how the amendment vote, the names of the individuals voting on that amendment vote. That is not included.
Where was that, Counsel?
It's midway through the second to last paragraph, paragraph that begins President Pasrow. There's a discussion on an amendment.
This is page nine?
Yes. About halfway through that paragraph, there's a sentence that says the amendment fails on a tie vote. There's no identification of how that vote went.
Just two more. Please stop giving them. Yep. Just above that correction, at my imagination, since we're different, seven point one, seven point two, second to last paragraph and seven point two, on my version, that appears on page nine. Sorry. Sorry, Nate. Two demerits. Okay. The second to last paragraph of seven point two begins with Counsel Maynard, moves the original question, seconded by Counsel Fries McSperren. President Pasrow asked for a vote. Counsel Spikachi opposed. Cam is approved. That should be, the motion to move the question was approved by a five-to-one vote, Counsel Spikachi opposed. That was just a motion to move the question. And I believe the next paragraph is correct. We voted on the motion. Okay. Continue, Counsel Spikachi.
Okay, thank you. As I said, just two more. On page eleven. Towards the end of seven point one O. Before the vote on the amended motion, there was an amendment that passed four to two. You can just identify that in the individuals voting. And then the last one is page twelve. Everyone's favorite point of meeting, adjournment. Past unanimous. Just identify that, past unanimous.
Are there any other corrections or additions? Hearing on all of the favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'm not opposed. I abstain. I was not, I was the President.
Okay. Passage unanimously with Counsel Heisler's extension. Okay. Five point oh A, public comment. First on the list, Harold Lee.
I was expecting to get the call. Harold Lee, East Street, London, Connecticut. And also, I am a member of the Citizens' Arm of a Trojan, New London. And I'd just like to make a couple things understood and to the people in the city, we're a nonviolent group. So you're going to an area, you're asked to go there. We help in front, look, buddy. And I'm just glad to go with that. I'm appalled at the turmoil our city is in. I just can't breathe it. I feel that we are having taxation without representation with this new government. All we do is get taxed and have programs taking away from us. The K-9 unit, people in our city work long and hard to bring the K-9 unit back in 1998. We launched it once, please don't let this happen again. The K-9 unit has become a tool of the trade. Don't deprive our city residents of the importance of the work that the K-9 unit does for us. We fought long and hard to get them back. And I, as a citizen, will do the same again, keep them. At least a pop. The turmoil that our city is in now, it will take us at least five years to start getting back where it should be as far as the public safety. Let's just start to get back there. Why would anyone want to come here to work if they're getting laid off every year when the conditions are unbearable? Every time we turn around, someone else is leaving. Everyone knows that you don't take all the money from one place, especially from the public safety. You could have taken some money from all the departments and saved jobs and kept public safety officers. I know that there are other everywhere cuts could have been made, and more money would have been saved if you listened to Adam Spikachi. If you don't have safety on our streets, people won't come here to buy homes to help them business. All I hear, all the time, is, oh, brother, you live in New London. I feel sorry for you. Well, I don't feel sorry for me. I love this city, and I'll do anything, anything possible to help this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Dowdman? After Dennis on deck is Dan McSperren.
See, ladies and gentlemen, I probably need to pull up on the list, something that some people don't attend to. That is quite a piano. I came on here today, I want to speak about a few things. I only have five minutes. The first thing I'd like to speak about is the community center, and the fact that right now it's looking like it wants to be put at Veterans Field. Now, I have questions on this issue. First of all, when you take a block away, you, everyone up here knows you need to replace it with a modern name and take it. I haven't heard anything mentioned about that. Second, I haven't heard anything about a public hearing, but I'm sure there will be, because I'm not hearing except maybe a couple of people from the neighborhood who want their block back. They don't want a community center again, they want their block back. Originally, it was said that you needed about five acres of land or so. I don't know if there's five acres of land there for a community center. Plus, the land was contaminated. So I guess you're gonna have to do something called capitol, or do something to build up on that. Another thing I hear is that the Y E C A is involved in this. I want to know possibly tonight if the Y E C A is gonna be running this community center if it gets built, or if they're going to actually commit and build it themselves. And I'm hearing that once this is done, that it's going to cost the citizens seventy-five dollars a month to be a member of the community center. Now, the ones on the watch will be the working, and maybe Mr. Prentice, and the teachers in Waterford. The Waterford Community Center there, I don't know if the people of that town, that are citizens of Waterford, have to pay to use their community center. I don't know of many other towns, but I will find out, because seventy-five dollars a month for some people is nothing. And those are the people that can probably own their backyard if they're cool. For seventy-five dollars a month, for a lot of people in other sections of town, that's food on their table. They're not gonna be able to get into this place. They're not gonna be able to go there on a regular basis. So if this is true about charging people to use this community center, I am totally gonna be against it. Right now, I think it's a wonderful idea, but this is putting a stop on it for me. And then I was gonna talk about another thing, and then I heard something in the audience tonight, which kind of blows my mind. I was told, or I seen, and heard, or heard, and people talking, that there's a gentleman that's running, wants to run for the Board of Ed. And he asked somebody that is part of the Democratic Party that if they would sign his petition, and he was told that, they were told that they can't. It seems that Democratic Town Committee and whoever is running it, well, I shouldn't say that, I'll take that back, I don't know if it's him. But the people of that committee, somebody is telling their people that do not help any other party, sign no petitions to help them run, which I can understand at one time that you don't want to take a chance of losing, but it is also telling people that unless you're a Democrat, in my opinion, you have no ideas. There's nothing you can do to help this city. You have to be a Democrat to make this city right. We've had Democrats in this city, and our city's not right. So when you go to vote, vote for the individual, whether it's a Democrat, or Republican, or an independent, or somebody that dropped in here from out of space, it doesn't matter. Don't be telling people, I just, I just can't. That's just, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Dan McSperren. On deck after Dan is Bill Vogel.
Good evening again, Dan McSperren, Twitty One Street in London. While I've been watching city council meetings and reading the accounts of actions by council administration, governance by ambush has been thrown around on referencing the office of the Mayor. On the agenda tonight for the council meeting, I am eight dot six, Community Recreation Site is a prime example of governance by ambush. This site has long been a community recreation site, and when the portable classrooms are scheduled to be removed, the promise to the neighborhood was that the athletic field would be restored and used by the neighborhood and the community. I know that because I walked the neighborhood, got petitions when the property is going up for sale, for the education property. That was over eight years ago. That property abuts Veterans Field. I had spoken before councils, prior to this council, that that would be a good location for a community center. The response was, that's not the right location for it. And it amazes me that today, though, the fields, the open field space that abuts it is a good location for a community center. That makes absolutely no sense. The council and the city need to stand by the promise that was made to the members of that community, my neighborhood, and return that to Fields. That was the promise that was made. That's what they need to stand by. To go around with a community-centered group and not speak to the people in a community and just come up with, that's what we're gonna do as a preferred site, is wrong. That's governance by ambush. That's absolutely wrong. With respect to I am seven dot three. I work for AT&amp;T. I travel all over the state. I spent two days in New Haven last week. Unless, I worked, my last day of work, I was off Friday. Unless Friday they got rid of the K-9 unit in New Haven, the City of New Haven does have a K-9 unit. I saw them on the streets on Tuesday and Thursday. So if they got rid of them, they got rid of them sometime over the weekend. But New Haven doesn't. City of New Haven does have a K-9 unit. Several. The important, the benefit of a strong K-9 component to our public safety structure can't be overstated. If we get rid of the program, we eliminate it. Who on this council wants to say, yes, we got rid of it. We're sorry that when your child was missing, we couldn't locate your child with tracking dogs locally, we had to wait six hours for state police K-9 to be available, or for a K-9 from another community because they were tied up, because we're gonna rely on mutual aid. That mutual aid doesn't make sense if the assessment is that this community does not need a K-9 unit. There's really no benefit to have a K-9 unit here, but we're gonna tap all our neighbors on the shoulders where we want to go. Can we use your K-9 unit today? They'll get tired, I'll lend you. Thank you.
Bill Vogel. After Mr. Vogel is William Vendetta.
Good evening. My name is Bill Vogel, and I live at two sixty-six Lower Boulevard. And I'm here tonight to talk about public safety. I think the number-one priority of the city government is public safety. Without public safety, we don't have a city. The other departments and other things the city does are in some priority below public safety, and we cannot not afford our public safety. That doesn't mean public safety needs all the money in the world, but it does mean that we need to be very smart, very knowledgeable, and very deliberate, and with some basis, in fact, as to how we manage our public safety. Whether we have seventy officers, ninety officers, or a hundred officers ought to be determined with a detailed study and analysis, not just a helter-skelter budget review. So, for example, five years ago, thereabouts, there was a study done that said we needed more than a hundred police officers in New London. At that time, we had ninety. Now, I understand we're at seventy or below. What is the basis for that being an acceptable number? I don't know. It's possible that it's a good number, but I wouldn't think so based on our past experience. But I do think that something needs to be done to determine what the optimal number is for the number of police officers. The same can be said for firefighters. The, I know we have the union agreement with firefighters at sixteen. I don't know if that's a good number or not. I'm not sure any study was really done to determine if that was a good number or not. It was a union negotiation. But we gotta be a lot smarter about public safety, and we gotta recognize that public safety is number one, and we have to be able to afford what's required for public safety. If we don't have enough money, then other things we'll probably have to suffer. I don't know whether the referendum will pass tomorrow or not, but I would encourage this city council to fund the Police Department to where it should be, where it has been, where it should be until we have better information that says that we can change it in some direction or another. If, for my personal opinion, I think the referendum should be a reject on all three counts, because I think that we need to do a lot to refine the budget. I'm very unimpressed with the process that was used, particularly in the development, not by the city council, but by the administration. I think these large cuts to the police force without an evaluation are not right. I think the current budget fails to incorporate lessons learned from the audits, and I haven't even seen the results of the audits. I don't know if they've been published. If they have been, I haven't seen them, but I haven't seen any move to try to incorporate lessons learned. There are still large minus numbers in the budget that don't show how it should be distributed. I think that no budget should be even accepted by the city council that has negative numbers in it, because it doesn't show what the plans, priorities, and purposes of the administration are in helping their budget. It's not a proper budget. It should be rejected, and we should go ahead and not let that happen again next year, and we should fix that this year if the referendum is rejected, comes up and rejected. I'm not sure that all the state money's been included in the budget, and I'm not sure that all the state money's been included in education. I doubt very much so, because these budgets were approved after the fact, after our budget was approved. The Board of Education budget has gross lack of detail in it, which really challenges transparency, so that needs to be fixed. Whether it's good budget or not, nobody knows, except whoever wrote it, I guess. I didn't see anything that included the year-end distribution surplus in our budget. That doesn't mean it's not there, it's just that it wasn't visible to me. If somebody knows that it's there, please let us know. Also, the health insurance cost didn't reflect the fact that, one minute, we now have state coverage for healthcare, and therefore that line should have gone down rather than up. And then, of course, we're raising taxes again, and I really strongly believe that this budget needs another quick scrubbing to make sure that we're giving the proper budget and taxes to the people in New London. Thank you very much.
After Mr. Vendetta is Debbie Phillips, if you want to start working your way down.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the council, your honor, and the staff of the mayor. As I reiterated a little earlier, that I've been involved almost three, four decades now in city government, and we'll be talking about issues tonight, and I'll start. The first one was just, again, was about Veterans Field. I was involved back then, and when we said that we needed for relocables to build these schools, we were sure, and it was mandated by the state, that it be replaced. If we take recreation out of one area, we have to replace it. We haven't replaced anything. So that's just touching on that area. The second is that I'm glad to see the Mayor here this evening and his staff, because this is the first time since I think he's been elected, that we've seen his full staff at a meeting. And I've always thought it was, somebody, the buck stops somewhere, and the buck should stop right here, because he's the chief administrator. And you, as councils, are doing your job the best you can, but we need cooperation from both sides, and obviously, we haven't got it. The other is, as I spoke earlier, and referenced the Police Department, we've been at odds with the administration for five years now, and the Mayor, the Police Mutual Relations, I'll touch that. We can't come to an issue over, or an agreement over whether it should be a public hearing or private. Everything in this city has been private, and all these discussions lately on administration. But that's a definition. Back to the K-9 unit. Again, as I said earlier, we look back on that, we can see Richard Armore, Tom Brinkin, Tom Larnigan, Frank Larnigan, rather, and these are the people who started with the K-9 and our motorcycle units. And yes, there's been controversy over the years, whether you should have it or not. But the key is, I would rather send a dog into a building than one of my police officers. And that's the most important. And that's the most important thing. It's no different than, Mr. President, you, when you go to a fire. You want backup when you go into that building. And that's what our people need here, is some backup. The other last thing is, basically, we need, we need to get together. We don't have any cooperation from the administration to this city council. This is not a democracy anymore. I feel it's a dictatorship. Thank you.
After Debbie Phillips is Michael Vassello.
Debbie Phillips, Ted Mountain Avenue, London. As a longtime resident of New London, I was recently infuriated by the deputy police chief's comments in regards to sexual assault three weeks ago on Pearl Street in downtown New London. I felt it was a very insensitive comment that was made to the public two weeks after the fact. My daughter works at a restaurant in downtown New London. No one was warned of this assault had occurred so close to downtown New London. None of the restaurants or businesses were told that the incident had occurred. And I felt the ball was dropped somewhere. There was no press release from the police chief, nothing from the mayor, complete silence. The police released some information that the suspect may have left town. We don't know that. There was no sketch made of the assailant. The public should've been immediately informed of that incident in order to take extra precautions. And I still don't know why the public is not aware. But I understand the Regina Police has the, the press releases to the mayor. So I look at the mayor, wondering why the public is not informed of that incident. This whole matter goes into the canine unit. What the police described as a foul smelling suspect should've been apprehended by the canine unit. I'm wondering why they weren't used in this particular case, why we have an increase of bites to citizens in New London, especially minorities. And I feel the canine unit will be more of a liability to the city of New London than to provide public safety. My next matter is coming downtown, downtown today. I noticed all the black iron receptacles, trash receptacles are empty downtown in London, which looks great, but the surrounding parts of New London, they oddly look a little empty. And I would like to know why public works on a regular trash day cannot empty those receptacles on a monthly, at least on monthly basis. And that's it.
Thank you. After Mr. Vassello is Frank McLaughlin.
Michael Vassello, 11 Harborough Lane, New London. I spoke, I don't know what to do too much, but I spoke last time, I did last meeting and about the canines. And what I'm really, again, they're, they're fantastic. I think it's good for the city. They do cost a little, not as much as an officer would cost. I spoke to Troy Lynch since that meeting and asked him how long would it take to get one? He knows where there's five or six, I'd ready to go. And I'm still willing to buy your dog. But, you know, I really, I'm a little surprised that some of the members don't want them on the council. So I think they're wrong. If it happened in your house, your grandchildren or something, you'd wanna walk it. If you're in the mayor's house, there's nothing against you, but if you need it, you want it. And if you're gonna go into some of these cellars, some of these houses in this town where these cops have to go, they're taking their life in their own hands. There's an officer, I saw in the background tonight, got shot behind Bank Street about fifteen or eighteen years ago, maybe longer. Officer Suarez got shot. Isn't it better to use a dog or just shoot a cop? I, I, I hope you really think about this. We need them. I bought the first police car, the football, first Ford Crown Vic, not police car, for the dogs to stop. That was back in eighty-four, eighty-five. It needed a motor come to find out. Les Pitt and Bill Lacy will hopefully tie it, put a motor in. These guys are willing to work out for you. Doesn't cost the city nothing, I mean. So I hope you vote for it. I know you don't like it, whatever.
Thank you. I guess I'll direct your attention to the right side of the chamber for Mr. McLaughlin's comments. And after him is Admiral Gregory.
Thank you for indulging. I have this picture that I wanna show on several thousand words. I'm Frank McLaughlin, Eighteenth Street, New London. I'm the project manager for RCDA. I also serve as chairman of the Economic Development Commission here in New London. And I'd like to address you this evening regarding the potential for connecting the Fort Trumbull Peninsula with downtown New London. Both the commission and the RCDA board recognize the need for this connection. Implementation is a matter of timing, design, and functionality, and as always, money. Timing, not now. Certainly, it's appropriate to have a public conversation about the possibilities and potential for this connection. However, we need to be sure that the demand will be there for the successful implementation of this project. The functionality of such a crossing will be the result of the design. It needs to be practical. Getting folks from point A to point B, in this case, from our waterfront park to the peninsula, this is the end of the waterfront park, I'm sure you're aware of that, and this is the peninsula, and that would be the shortest correct connection that we could make. If truly practical, connection would be as short as possible as I just pointed out. Thus, from the very south end of the waterfront park to the closest point on the north end of the peninsula. The problem, that landing point on the peninsula means that a walk from the landing point to any location on the peninsula, whether to the proposed housing, which is all the way over here, and here, and here, or to electric boat, which is all the way over here, or to the historic fort, which is all the way over here, creates quite a long walk to get to using the, the, the short bridge over here. That gives rise to the practicality of the water taxi. We'll talk about that in a minute. Adding a pedestrian walkway to the Amtrak swing bridge is practical in terms of cost, but not necessarily time. Because during the summer months, the bridge is left open for long periods of time between trains to allow for boat traffic. Therefore, walkers and hikers would have to wait while the bridge is open for as much as a half hour. I think once folks realize this, it's likely they will not use that kind of connection. A separate bridge for pedestrians and bikes would have to be a swing or drawbridge similar to the bridge that's there, or slope up high enough to cross over this waterway to allow for mass of the boats that are in here. And that would indeed require a very high bridge, which would require escalators, elevators, or stairs. It would have to be much higher than the proposed bridge over the railroad tracks at Union Station. Another idea is an aerial tram. It's very interesting. You can run near a trams from somewhere in the city, up, over, down, and to other locations here. The problem with aerial tram, of course, is it would be very expensive to install. It has to be maintained and it has to have personnel to operate it. There's an old tunnel that runs under the tracks starting at the entrance to Captain Scott's, go right in here. It goes under the tracks and comes up, used to come up in this area. The problem with that is that it's a long walk around the Captain Scott's. People will drive, block traffic at Captain Scott's. So again, it's not necessarily practical. Another possibility is a rail shuttle that would run from Union Station to a potential commuter rail stop in Fort Trumbull. Commuter train, like you see in airports, doesn't require personnel, runs back and forth automatically, and could connect to a commuter station here at Fort Trumbull. Moving on from the idea of a bridge or a tunnel bridges to the concept of multi-use trails and water taxis. The Economic Development Commission has made it a guiding principle not to let the Yale Urban Design Group study of Fort Trumbull gather dust.
One minute.
Various committees of the commission have been looking at ways to implement suggestions from the study. We work in tandem with the Economic Development Committee of this council. Chairman Prakash attends commission meetings, often with President Pasero, and we attend council meetings. Commission member Dr. Abel Donca has proposed that a mola-used trail for walkers, cyclists, and commuters be developed all the way down, around, and into Fort Trumbull. It's a, a long route. Cyclists would like that. I'm not sure that walkers would. And it'll take some time to implement the entire trail, but we are working on that. Another committee of the commission has been studying the possibility of a water taxi. Purchasing and maintaining boats and hiring qualified personnel to operate them is an expensive proposition, but the ideas can address several issues for our waterfront community. It can provide pickup from several locations on the waterfront, from State Pier, downtown, or how New Marina is, to our mooring field, to the end of the pier, and then come over to Fort Trumbull. And the neat thing about the water taxi is it can drop at various locations.
Aye. Thank you very much. After Mr. Gregory is Dr. Hayes.
After Gregory, Thirty-Six Franklin Street, the Keel House, New London. I didn't know if I heard Mr. Pasero correctly, but maybe you can correct it. Is it correct that you were having coffee with a dog in the alley waters? It reminded me of stories.
It was a steak place, though. Two.
What are we having to... I like to always think in terms, I, I call it three dogs. Respect, respect, and respect. And I think that we, meaning the people here in New London, we care about the issues like crime, education, and government. Most people, however, they feel isolated and powerless. I think we all need to apply those three dogs and try to perceive each and every person here as value, with a value. I'm happy also that the mayor's sitting here. And I think that when you face people in a room, even though we have differences, there's hope. How is there hope? By way of education. We can educate one another and we can do diligence and hopefully the better side will come out of it. I'd like to call your attention to something that concerns me. At Seventy-Three Broad Street, the house was bought and it, it's going to be taken off. I was informed that it's gonna be taken off the tax roll. It was bought by the homeless people and they're calling this a transition house. I went down to see if they had received permission for this transition housing. There was no zoning. They didn't have to go through zoning. Please help me. Why do we have zoning and why do we have committees if we don't use them and certain people don't have to go through them? I'd like to talk about employees. It seems that many times I feel like we're, we're an incompetent agency. We're running, we, we have employees and they're running the city for their benefit. Who's in control? And two of those employees are sitting on our city council. I believe we need to change the charter. We cannot have employees sitting on the council. I admit, these two gentlemen are very honorable. They're very good. However, they are our employees and there's a conflict. We need to change the charter. We have twenty-five thousand people. Out of twenty-five thousand, we can't find appropriate people to run for city council? We need our employees. I'd like to propose, what if all seven were employees? How would that be? Maybe we can all sit back and just watch our plasma TV and see what goes on here. Do we need the employees to run our city? They, we employ them. They work for us.
One minute.
This is totally corrupt. This is the union running our city. I would also request that these two employees, they find appropriate people to run for city In regards, once again, I don't wanna, I think the dog issue, if we could have a little more time to do due diligence, to study it up. We've applied many studies for things that really don't seem much that matter. I would say that this really matters. There's a lot of passion on both sides of the fence. Let's postpone it, give it a few more months. There's no rush for the dog. Let's study it up. Let's come to the conclusion based on due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hayes. And after Dr. Hayes is Beverly Knapp.
Hey, it's Seven Forty Ocean Avenue. In past months, I know I've spoken a number of times in favor of the canine program, which I think is essential. I would hate to see anything happen to it. Plenty of room for improvement, needs work, but it should be done. And having said that a number of times in the past, being a hundred percent in favor of it, I get here tonight and I listen to a very well-known person, apparently has reservations about it, so I would tell you I'm a hundred and fifty percent in favor of this. Just do it. Anyway, I don't need to say more about that except for one response to Admiral Gregory when he says you can borrow a unit from a surrounding community. By the time that unit gets here, it's too late. I mean, it's gonna take twenty minutes, half an hour, three quarters of an hour. It's almost like not having a unit. So anyway, I, I won't, don't, don't wanna belabor that. I, like I said, well, sitting here, I guess I'm up to a hundred sixty percent in favor of canine. One other thing, don't do anything that diminishes the ability of citizens and veterans field using that field the way it's supposed to be used. I don't think the community center should approach on that, aside from problems about funding the community center. But I don't wanna take up too much of your valuable time, so I will sit down.
After Mrs. Knapp is Karen Ball.
Beverly Knapp, Twenty-Third Street, Road Avenue. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. One of my issues is one-way street. Mainly the one that I'm concerned about is the one near my street. It's a light-dured street between Cedar Grove Avenue and Ashcraft Road. Years ago, it was made a one-way because a gentleman that lived on that street wanted a one-way. And through whatever he went through, he got it to be a one-way. This person is now deceased, has been born for quite some time, and I'd like it again to become a two-way street if I need to get a... If I need to get a petition going, or whatever else I need to do, please let me know uh, what I have to do. Also lately on my street, Cedar Grove Avenue, it has become a trap for motorcycles, um, and scooters, doing some wheelies, not only on the street, but on my sidewalk. Or as my dogs say, it's their sidewalk, because they bark every time they are on their sidewalk when they're on wheelies. Um, this was mentioned, I believe, and I know for a fact, on one of the Metro Cashes. Do we need speed bumps on my road? I realize this something happens for a few months. I did forget somehow. I already told you about the sidewalk, so I didn't forget. Also, my next issue, I was downtown in London practically all day yesterday. Went for breakfast, um, went home and went out for a family outing over recent point each and brought it. And then came back, and Karen and I went to the Copperwood Twill for dinner and went to the Hygienic to listen to a one-hour show put on by Connecticut. It was in Scorsese. It was very good. For you that missed it, if it comes again, please go see. It was very, very good. Also, in the afternoon, another friend of mine who had come for breakfast, we took a little tour. The guy toured, her and I, by ourselves through New London. It's beautiful. The flowers are gorgeous. The street, everything, the sidewalks were clean. I used to walk on the waterfront when my son worked at, uh, when it's a narrow hall lane. He used to get off at ten o'clock, and I'd come down at nine o'clock and walk the waterfront. I was not afraid. I was more afraid walking around my block on Cedar Grove, Ledger, Broad Street, and coming around. I was more afraid here than I was downstairs. So again, um, oh, and another thing, Veterans Field, which is right up my street. When I was in high school, um, I lived in Waterford, but I did not have a high school. This is back in the fifties. So now you never know where I am. Um, I'm probably a D O at seventy-three. But anyways, uh, that's where in New London I played. And before it was Veterans Field, it was Morgan Park, and I'm pretty sure nobody knows that. And I believe the Leeds didn't go there. Um, so again, thank you very much, Tom. I guess I didn't give my five more. I didn't do it. Thank you very much.
After Miss Paul is Caitlin Teal.
Here in Hall, three-one State Street. I have a couple of things I'd like to speak about tonight. One of them is, um, the school board budget. I'm not quite sure how many administrators the school board has, and I understand they just added three more. And I don't want to take anything away from the education of our children. However, there are less than thirty-three hundred children going to school in New London. At the same time, we have more than forty-four hundred senior citizens that are just registered voters. That's not counting all the ones that aren't registered. At the senior center, we have one administrator who oversees programs, services, all of the outreach things, takes care of people's problems, supervises all of what goes on at the senior center and what goes on away from the senior center they've instituted with the seniors. It seems strange that it takes eleven or twelve administrators to administer to thirty-three hundred children and one administrator to administrate to over forty-four hundred senior citizens. I just wanted to think about those numbers. The other thing, and this is a personal thing, but it has to do with the topic tonight. My oldest daughter, fifty years old next month. When she was in her early twenties, she and two roommates had an apartment at Vena Speech in California. You've probably all heard of Vena Speech, because there was a terrible accident down on the boardwalk Saturday. One evening, one of her roommates was raped. It's in Venice. Venice is part of L.A. County as far as the police department goes. The dog caught the rape. Three million dollars. They're an important, valuable part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Teal, one-seventeen Norwood Avenue. I kind of have a mix of thoughts for this evening. The first on public safety and, um, I don't want to feed any animal, let alone a horse, but, um, I will just clarify my points. That as a daughter of a retired police officer, obviously I value public safety. Um, as a citizen of this city, I value public safety. Uh, clearly, the counselors, or the majority of the counselors, um, value public safety as I assume the majority of you are going to vote for this K nine ordinance tonight. We've also seen tonight the very current lack of communication within the department, the police department in the city of New London. Uh, we've, we saw that by Ms. Officer Lynch's comments about communications with the administration of that department, and also from Officer Nolan's previous comments at, at other city council meetings regarding the lack of communication in the department. There's also a lack of communication with, between the press and the citizens and the police department. So with all of that said, I think we have a serious issue with New London Police Department. So that should be a priority, obviously, as we move forward. But there's also a misconception as to the funding of the police department, at least as a citizen is concerned. We sit here tonight and hear the, um, debate about the K nine unit and its, um, need, its level of funding that it requires. And we've had the opportunity to read very colorful Facebook posts and Patch posts over the last couple of days about, um, why we ask citizens to vote for the current budget because items like the public safety need to be funded. Um, but the misconception is, is that the, the New London Police Department is in the state, is in because of lack of funding. And that's incorrect. So I just wanted to clarify that point. I wanted to thank the city council for the opportunity to vote. I'll be refereeing it tomorrow. We're going to get the opportunity to vote on the budget that I was just talking about. And again, I want to applaud the mayor and his staff, and their attempts to sway votes in their direction. There's been very colorful banter on all social media outlets in, uh, the, the day and the Patch, so I appreciate that. I was provided a little bit of light reading over the last couple of days. Um, so with all of that said, I am going to leave with time to spare and say, uh, thank you. I hope everybody comes out tomorrow to vote, and they will agree on their conscience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our, our signup list. Five-point-O-B petitions are none tonight. Five-point-O-C, response to public comment. Who would like to go first? Counselor Spicati, I'm sorry you got there.
Once again, thanks, everybody, for coming out. I would, I might come back. All right. Uh, thanks, everybody, for coming out again, uh, this evening, for all the support and all that was presented today. Uh, my first response is to Mr. Abner. Gregory. The voters voting me into office. I am still very appreciative of it. If they don't vote me into office, I will likely sit back and applaud the person who gets voted in instead of me. But until the voters say that they don't think it's a good year for me to run, I'm going to continue to run. I try and make the wisest assuas that I can in the best interest of the city. If I do not, if people, you know, confront me about it, or talk to me about it, I will sit down with them and, and deal with it. Um, so until I am not voted in for city council, I will continue to run. Because enough people are speaking loud enough to say that they're okay with it. And there is not enough people trying to run for it. So that is another reason why I decided to run again this year. Um, just to settle that. Uh, as far as the dog, K nine, again, I am still, um, gonna go for the K nine. I'm gonna vote for the K nine. I think it's an asset to the city. I think it's an asset to officers. And I think it's an important thing for the police department to have and to maintain. Um, so I will respectfully agree to disagree, um, with whoever, and, and stand my ground on that. And I, I know there's a list of people, so I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Counselor Nolan. Counselor Mead.
Thank you. Funny, I also want to address one of my comments to, uh, Mr. Gregory. Ted, put off the vote. We'll study, let's see what comes back. This city has probably two layers of work of studies that have been done, or none has been put forward. So that comment, it's like, I don't support this, or this tonight, because, uh, enough studies have been done. When we start using the study that was done on the police department, instead of like they collect us, then we will start getting, doing some real studies. But until then, it's gotta happen. Now, Mrs. Knapp.
Yes.
You do not want speed bumps on your road.
Pardon?
You do not want speed bumps on your road, because that is only going to give you the eventual, the motorcycle opportunities to get even higher on you.
That's true. Thank you very much, Tom. I can't take consideration.
You know, this whole thing about public safety, it's real easy to fix. It's an easy fix. Fire the chief. That's the fix. You put the deputy chief in charge. He's a good man. He, he's upright. He's calm. I'm going to fire the chief. Let's take our chances and before the lawsuit. Because I'll tell you what, we, we, she's neglected her duties. She's made statements that she can't undermark it. So let's do the right thing and stop sitting here week after week battling over public safety. There's no future. The administration, the council, and the citizens can all come together. But we need to work together, and we gotta start by getting rid of the problem. And I'll tell you, as Mr. Gregory said, the bug stops at the top. You know, that's where we need to start. I think I request to the mayor, I know she's suing us once already, but I don't care for it as far as I'm concerned. I'd say fire her and take our chances. That's the only way we're going to stop the public safety and start getting our police department back to the morale that it once was. We've gotten rid of so many officers that didn't want to lead. Captain Dick, Captain Lacy, Captain, uh, Deputy Chief C. The list goes on. They were well, well disqualified to do the job. The reason why there goes is because the chief had a private vendetta. That's the only reason why Dick is not there anymore. So to me, it's like, let's start fixing the problem when the problem starts at the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mead. Counselor Fink's bound.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say about, um, half a dozen of you that commented on Veterans Field. I am not in favor of using this for a community center. This property was promised to the neighborhood to be turned back into fields, whether it's turned back into ball fields or just a, an empty field where people in the neighborhood can bring their kids to play. Um, that's what it was supposed to be turned back into. And so I will not be supporting that. Um, as far as the K nines, again, I've always been a supporter of the police department and the K nine unit. And I'll continue to support them as a necessary tool in these communities for public safety, for the safety of the officers. And we can't have people to come here for business or for, uh, to live here or for pleasure if our city is not safe. And...
Also, Counselor Spicati.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to thank everybody who, uh, came to the council meeting tonight and also to the Public Safety Committee prior to this. Also, I want to thank all the speakers, uh, who gave comment, uh, this evening. Sort of warmed my heart seeing the, the number of people come and comment, uh, increasing all the time. I know with the, uh, we changed the form of government, I think our first, uh, few meetings, there were only a handful of individuals who came and spoke at council meetings. But now, more and more are coming to speak, and I think that is, uh, that is good for, for the city. Going, I guess chronologically, or as even chronologically, as these issues were identified, the first one being issue of a potential community center in Veterans Field. Uh, this is an item that is being placed in, uh, committee. Uh, there is a recommendation on our agenda to, uh, to consider this field by the, uh, the group that's been evaluating the community center here in New London. Uh, so this is going to committee, and that is where this debate, uh, will be held. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of the debate, of course. Uh, I always think that the council should, uh, consider things that, uh, that, that haven't been considered before. Uh, and this community center idea is one of those. Uh, I know there are individuals who are concerned about the use of Veterans Field, um, and whether or not that is the right spot for the community center. Uh, all that information's going to get vetted, but, uh, we have to start somewhere. And by starting the discussion here and starting at the point where this working group made a recommendation, um, I, I think we'll be able to come through whether or not that is indeed the right location. But again, that is something that is now, or if it passes the, the agenda, excuse me, will be in the, uh, in the opinion of the city council. Uh, Mr. Vendetta commented about the status of the police community relations committee. This is an item that, uh, I know, I'm sure we all know, is, is, uh, is still unresolved. There was a meeting of the Public Safety Committee meeting, uh, of this Public Safety Committee. And at that meeting, a, uh, a modification to the ordinance was approved. And I believe that it now stands in the administration committee. So, uh, being a member of the administration committee, I'm looking forward to that meeting when we can have that debate and determine exactly how we should resolve the issues associated with Police Community Relations, uh, committee. Because reportedly, uh, it is an issue and it is the responsibility of the council, uh, to resolve that issue. With regard to the pedestrian walkway and water taxis and other elements of the Yale Urban Design Report study that Mr. McGloughlin, uh, brought to our attention, I want to thank him for that. Uh, the city council, and in particular, the Economic Development Committee, the city council has been working very closely with the Economic Development Commission, uh, which Mr. McGloughlin is, uh, co-chair of, I believe. And, uh, I want to thank him and all the individuals on that commission for all the work they're doing keeping the recommendations of the Yale Urban Design, um, study alive. They are looking at a number of things. The pedestrian walkway is, as he, uh, Mr. McGloughlin points out, it is something that is considered, but it's sort of on the back burner now pending, uh, other items. Uh, I don't have an issue with that. I guess the, uh, one thing I would, uh, want to make sure of is that we don't miss an opportunity. Uh, I know, uh, based on what I've seen around the area, Ashcraft does have a schedule of refurbishing pitches, and we should be mindful of exactly when this is over Shaw's Pole is going to be refurbished. And if it's going to happen in three, five, or seven years, uh, we need to be aware of that so we can serve ourselves in the process and possibly get that pedestrian walkway, uh, with very little cost, uh, to the city. And with regard to water taxi, I think it's a fantastic idea. Uh, one thing I've mentioned at the meetings also, perhaps that water taxi could operate similar to a taxi now, whereas, uh, a number of, of companies or individuals who are properly licensed are, are on call. And anybody who happens to be using a mortgage just hasn't missed, uh, and call somebody who might be available. So, uh, some things to consider there, but I do, uh- Some things to consider there, but I do applaud the efforts of the Economic Development Commission for keeping those items alive. With regard to Ms. Knapp, you're correct, that was a discussion regarding the motorcycles and speeding throughout New London. That was a discussion that was held on Metro Podcasters, I was on the show, that a number of people called in on, and it wasn't surprising. So I wanna thank those who did call in, and that is something that I am currently looking into. And finally, with regard to the ordinance on a canine division, this is something I will be supporting. We do have a demonstrated need for it. We've had canine division in the city for a great number of years. And when it's operated properly, I think it does everyone in the city a service. With regard to the council's right to establish an ordinance to have a canine unit, I believe it would, it is within our rights according to sections within the charter that allow us to set the number of officers, I believe canine officers are officers in the department. And also with regard to other sections of the charter that allow us to define, or rather determine, the duties of departments and offices. That's also something that, I know the power that is provided to the city council. So for those reasons, I will be supporting it. I thank the Public Safety Committee for considering and passing the amendments that I proposed. One of the amendments was to identify the types of capabilities of the animals. And those capabilities include all the capabilities that the canine unit had been capable of doing over the past several years. The purpose behind my amendment, or my suggested amendment, because I'm not a voting member of that committee, was to get us back to where we were with regard to the canine program. And with all that said, it still has the flexibility on the part of the administration to run the canine program. They can assign different dogs with different abilities during different shifts. And also, if they have issue with the way dogs are behaving and handlers are behaving, there are training regimes that can be revisited if that is indeed the issue. So for all those reasons, I will be supporting the item regarding the canine. And that brings me to the bottom of my list, so thank you all.
Thank you. Councilor McCreeham.
Thank you. A few of the public comments suggested that not supporting the ordinance is a lack of support for the canine program. There can be nothing further from the truth from where I sit. It simply isn't the case. I have grown to trust our law director, and his advice suggests that there are problems with the ordinance. And it's mine, that with some tweaking, the ordinance could gain unanimous support. That's what I would like to strive for, and I think that all parties could be happy at that point, and we would serve the city well. So I just wanted, many of the people who spoke tonight have great respect for it. I understand the work that the dogs do, and I agree. My difficulty is with the ordinance as written, and I don't believe that can be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McCreeham. Councilor President Protem Heisler.
Thank you. I, I'm glad you followed probably on the lines of Councilor McCreeham in taking sections, because when I listened to some of the comments, it led you to believe that I was opposed to the canine program. I'm not opposed to the canine program. I do have difficulty in understanding some of the things that are being proposed and why they're being proposed the way they are. I would ask that we probably delay a vote on this tonight until we can vet some of the issues that are probably out there. That's number one. So don't keep me here saying that I'm opposed to the canine program, because that's usually what happens. When people come in, they say, "I heard that you said, and that's not what I said." I said, "I had problems with some probably the handlers versus the dogs," that's what I said. The number two thing is, Mr. Downey, they mentioned the fact that somebody was running for office, and they were told that Democrats should not be signing petitions, or the Democrats told not to sign petitions. I happen to be one of the vice chairs of the Democratic Council Committee, and there's another one that's here tonight as well. I don't remember anyone making mention of that, that Democrats should not sign petitions. One of the things that we should understand is that if someone wants to sign a petition, they are of their own position to be able to do that if they so choose to do that. Nothing that I know came down as a director from the party itself, so I hope people will understand that. The other thing is that in reference to veterans field, I was one of the state legislators at the time who fought for money to do the remediation. It is correct that that field was supposed to be returned back to a field, because that was one of the selling points of getting money for remediaging, was that when the school module removed, that this year would revert back to a field that would be used by the community. So those individuals who talked about that, that was a promise that was made to the state legislature, that this is what's supposed to happen. I think one of the things, as we see here, it becomes difficult sometimes when, and I said this earlier, when you say that the community come out to support. I don't see a great representation of the community that I represent. I say that I'm talking about a cross-section of the community. I'm talking about, I wanna see people of color as well as people who are properly considered in the majority. So I think we need to understand that, don't just say, "Well, we got great community support." I talk to many people day in and day out who are not necessarily supportive of some of the things that I've been supportive of. But like I said, some people are intimidating to come in here, especially when you have people who walk the streets and who say things that are said to them, and they don't wanna come down here just to face other people. When you talk of people don't wanna move to New London, just over this weekend, I talked to three individuals who are looking at buying houses in New London. One person that comes to mind, I had an extensive conversation with, was coming from the Westbury area. They have a business in this area, and they're looking to move to New London. And in our course of our conversation, they found New London probably a safer city to live in than what they have been told. And that's just from, as Mrs. Knapp said, just walking the streets and they come. And many of us don't walk the streets, we find negative things to say about New London. New London is not that bad. It's a great city, and we need to stop quoting that and stop doing it in the paper, on our shows, or whenever we talk to people. We need to put a positive spin about New London. I have said it before, and I'll say it again, we've got some, because a lot I hear about the police officers this, the police officer that. We've got some great police officers, so don't get me wrong when I say this. But we also have some police officers that are not so great communicators with the public. And that's why I keep saying, we need to go through some sensitivity training with some of our officers, and they, not just our officers, but many people that work in the city, within the city. And start treating people, I'm gonna use Adam Gregory's words, he said, "There's three things: respect, respect, respect." We don't respect each other in this city. That's what our biggest problem is. And when we learn how to respect one another for who we are, rather than just being in opposition to them at everything that they try to do, or try to twist the words of people, then maybe we can move this city forward. I was elected here to represent the entire city of New London. I said this before, and I was called in a copy for it, because I had been told that there was 300 people that were assigned a petition. They got me elected, and I said, "No, I believe I was elected by more than 300 people." So there's other people out there that I represent. So don't feel just because I say no right now, does not mean that I might not vote for something later on. But we rush things through, try to get it through, so that others will say, "Well, you see he didn't vote for that, he must be opposed to it." That's not how I operate. I operate on the fact that we vet the issues, I talk to people who can give me the answers. When I get the answers, then I can be an educated voter. Just because someone put something in there that you seem to like, that's up to you. But I have to, I have to sleep at night. When I sleep at night, it's gonna be because I made the best choice that I could make with the ambition that's provided for me. So with that in mind, I think we need to learn how to respect one another for who we are, rather than what you want them to be. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Heisler. That completes, I'll just speak very briefly. I wanna thank, first of all, everybody for coming out, and everybody for speaking. In view of Mr. Gregory's comments on employees serving on council, I just wanna say that I appreciate that the Wizard of the State Legislature protects my rights to serve my community. And I'm honored to do so. I was elected by an overwhelming number of people. I'm also honored to serve with Officer Nolan. Any individual in this community that's elected could confront a conflict of interest. If you serve sitting on this council, you could confront a conflict of interest. But I would never accuse your one simply to cause you're a businessman in the city and a landowner in the city. I wouldn't question your motives if you were sitting up here unless I had reason to. So I only ask you not to question mine, unless you're pointing to a vote that I made that was improper. And the same goes for Officer Nolan. On the dog ordinance, I think we've sent over a month on it. I'm comfortable that we've crafted an ordinance that falls well within our authority as the legislative body of this city. I respectfully disagree with the law director. It's a respectful disagreement. So I'm gonna support the ordinance tonight as it passed, as amended through the Public Safety Committee. And I hope that the administration will consider the will of the council very seriously. On the issue of the community center, I have to echo some words of Mr. Gregory. I think you're very instructive, it's good being the same here. It gives us hope, and it educates us. We've had a very large collaborative of community partners working on the issue of providing indoor recreational facilities for our community for over three years. The collaborative represents a broad spectrum of the important institutions and people in our community. They're trying very hard to fill the void we have in this community. You know, we have a pool, we have a pool, and we did take care of it. And when it was operating, we did provide access to the public, because it was very within the school, and it was very hard to provide access. We did, up till the early days, have a YMCA, which was a very, very important component of our community. It provided health and recreational opportunities for all age groups. It was vibrant, and I remember it, a lot of people still remember it, and they wanna recreate. We need some type of facility. Now, this group, I only ask people like Mr. McSparron to just educate yourself on the facts, because most of what you said was completely mistaken. And if you need information on any type of initiative like this, just ask. One of us will gladly talk with any of you. But a lot of people on this collaborative, we've been meeting all over town. When you say it's government by ambush, this has been a very public process. The meetings have been well attended, and they've been held at, the last one was at William School. They've been held at the Auditorium in Allen and Hospital. This is an important initiative to address Councilor Sparron. I don't know whether I support French Field enough. We don't know that yet. What I do know is, yes, it was promised to be turned back into what it was. But that was before, really, we found out that it's a contaminated site that's really an asset contaminated with arsenic. It's already capped, it's got limited uses, and it's gonna cost a lot of money to turn it back into an outdoor recreational field. In the ten years that it's been used to site part of classrooms, we have greatly improved our other outdoor recreational fields. Hawkins Park is now underway. We have two beautiful new artificial turf fields up at High School. Mercer Field's been improved. We just did the Little League Field up at Base Woods. The Parks and Rec Commission in this city is doing an amazing job. And the staff of Parks and Rec has been with this community center collaborative every step of the way. So I'm not sure where we can site a community center, an indoor recreation center, but this collaborative at this stage is saying, "Let's look at this site. Let's look at what it's gonna cost us to turn it into another outdoor recreational facility, or let's look and see if we can turn it into an indoor recreational facility, which we have none of. And also, let's look for a way to fund this, so it's not on the back of the tax bill." We're only looking out for the interest of this community. And I invite any of you who are interested in this issue to join this effort, because as a community, we can get this done. All the motion this tonight is to move the issue into the appropriate council committee. It's not gonna be debated tonight, it's just going to the appropriate council committee, the Case Parks and Rec Committee, to be debated. Because we're at the stage where the collaborative says, "We think we have a part in the Ocean Community YMCA. They do a marvelous job in other communities." They wanna help us, we think they can help us. We think we have a site. So it's just a debate. Now, it's being decided, and everybody's gonna have been put into it. But you know I feel passionate about it. It's one of the issues I got involved in government for. I think it's a void in our community. I think we're cheating our seniors, I think we're cheating our children. I think we need to provide an indoor recreational facility for a community of 26,000 people. You shouldn't have to be a student at Con College to go enjoy a beautiful facility. You shouldn't have to be, have rights to the Coast Guard Academy or one of these other institutions this city's provided for our community as a whole. So having spoken long on that one topic, it's not that I'm not interested in the rest, and I appreciate all your comments tonight. And I think we'll move on to the meeting.
Oh, Councilor Nolan.
As far as what you were just talking about, I don't know if it's, this time I should do a vote, when we pull it. To ask questions about that, should I wait till you pull it?
Yeah. If you pull it, then we can debate fully. All right, moving on to the agenda, reports and communications, the Director of Law report you should have in your, um, you should have in your agenda packet, June 30th, 2013, report from Mr. Nolan.
Question for the law director.
Councilor Friesenbarren.
Thank you. On the litigation side, number 10.
Yes.
I need an update as to this.
Yes, the property owner has not... The property owner has not complied or responded to my letter, so I intend not bringing enforcement action, so I can record it next week or so.
Because this is becoming a dumping ground. Also, some kids in the neighborhood have broken into the building, and homeless people are taking them. Residents of the building, so the quicker we can move this over, the better for the neighborhood.
Understood.
Councilor Spikatia.
Thank you. Through you to Director of Law, just one item, genocide number one regarding the lighthouse. And, you know, today, I'll just preface this by saying, I'm generally in agreement with the way we're moving forward with this. But I guess my question is, with regard to your meeting with city officials regarding security of property and prioritizing maintenance, how can we do anything with that property until we own it? Is this just scheduling, or are we actually spending hours?
We can't do a thing with the property, because we don't own it yet. This is just getting a game plan for the inevitability of that if we come here. It could be that the owner is going to pay the back taxes of $500,000, $700,000, or whatever.
And then that was my concern, I didn't wanna go off and actually do repair works and come to realize I've spent several thousand dollars only to have it taken down.
Nothing's being done from that standpoint that, one, can either be leaned and recouped, or, two, is just getting a game plan for the beginning or middle of September. And if redemption does not occur, the city now has this property, and what steps are we gonna do, and in what order?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Spikatia. Anybody else? Quickly on that same point, who's paying for the security down there right now?
My understanding is that the city has retained ACE security, who was there before, so I believe the city is paying for the security if that's, the private security that's down there during the day. Or in the evening, I forget to order it.
So why are we doing that, knowing all the property?
Well, there's concern that the property is an attractive nuisance. And the city also still has tax things on the personal property that's in the building. And obviously, we wanna secure that interest that we have in that property as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lohner. Council pay reports. Council Mayor.
And if you'd like, I just wanted, as we all here in the discussion about, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting tonight. And the ordinance for the K nine has passed through the committee with some amendments that Counselor McSparrow had read law forward for Counselors Spikac. So that was the only, although there was other items on the agenda all at that time before. So the writing for post-holmes till the next public safety.
Thank you, Council Mayor. And I will say that there will be a joint meeting of the Board of Education and the City Council at six o'clock, preceding the next City Council meeting on August nineteenth. There are at least two items on the agenda. One will be the disposition of Parker School. The second will be acquiring joint financial software for the board of the City of New London. Five point O E, Mayor's Office Communication.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I am happy to be here tonight. A number of people who spoke earlier said that they appreciate my attendance at these meetings. I'm happy to attend any meeting of the council that I'm invited to. The councilors do my presence with the assistance. I also have an open door policy in my office and set aside at least fifteen minutes for anyone who calls. And I only regret that Susan Plunkett has left the room because I've been offering to get her coffee for two years now. And I'm hoping that she'll eventually take me up on the offer. I'm also very cognizant of Counselor Mayor's exhortation to not ramble on. Although the council president said this was the one part of the evening where I could keep you here all night. I will try not to do that, for my own sanity as well as yours. I think the barometer I lose for if I go on some laws is when Council McCrino starts to crack jokes. I'll know I've gone on too far, but I do believe there's a number of points that need to be seriously addressed. The first is deduction in public safety. Wayne Vendetto Senior, who I respect very much, said, "We're now the number of dictatorship." Well, that's fascinating news to me. Because if we were, we'd not have lost one single officer in our police department. What I think everyone is forgetting is that a little over a year ago, I walked out here and gave perhaps the most difficult speech of my life, telling a community that had been wholly unaware of the financial situation that it was in, that we were approaching a potential municipal bankruptcy. That our fund balance was gone, that we were running a four-point-seven million dollar deficit. And that if we were gonna maintain all of our staffing levels, maintain all of our contracts, that it would require a twenty percent tax increase. It hit everyone like a brick in the face, as you pretty much expected it would. But it was real. It was real. And many people didn't believe it at times.
Counselor is in session. Yes, is in session. Counselor President is in session. Yes, is in session.
...